Open air, it's 5:04. And this is to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which stands one nation, under God, individual, without any interest or fraud. Thank you, everyone, for being here in person. Hallelujah, right? So we're kind of lost. And let's be back here with everyone. I've been for a few years as well, so. I'm gonna lean on you, Doris, and everyone else, if I make mistakes, just jump in and tell me everything you say or whatever, something like that. I appreciate that. We have minutes from the June meeting, which was before my eyes, on this board, but we have room to prove minutes. Can I accept the motion, Doris, in a minute?
Second.
Right, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good, so those are. We did not have a meeting in July or August, not because of what things going on with those or with what those planning board, but because things were in order for us to review them.
Yeah.
So that's just to be clear about why we weren't here those two months, but now we have a few things to talk about. So we'll go right to the back enterprise LLC, pretty good Long Island Avenue. And Dennis?
Dennis is on.
He's on, right?
Dennis, are you on?
Yes, I can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, hi Dennis. Nice to see you. Nice to hear you.
How you been?
There you are. There you are. I'm getting you up very well. Nice to have you here. Kathy, we've got the. Well, we've got a few things going on. I'm sure they want to talk about something. We also have the coordination of lead agency. And the recent new declaration dated May 28, 2019. Perhaps we start there, or?
Yeah, yeah. So that's the, that's the action that has to be taken tonight related to the board's approval as a resolute resolution to coordinate for lead agency status under secret. So, and it rescinds the negative declaration was that was dated May 28, 2019. And that is for a number of reasons, but mostly because this project is different than what was considered at the time that that neg deck was adopted. And also the Board of Trustees now has jurisdiction over the project.
And that's because it's got their over thirty-five hundred square feet in the waterfront of the district. So they have to get a special exception permit from the Board of Trustees. So they're another involved agency, so you have to coordinate with them to take lead agency over that application.
Okay, so by rescinding the nerd deck, do we have to do, where does it go from there afterwards?
So we'll re-coordinate with a copy of the fully AF. We did review the EAF and it's fine for the purpose of circulating. There is also the traffic impact study, the parking study and the addendum. We also have comments on those. Those would need to be updated at some point in order to complete the review under secret. But for the purpose of lead agency coordination, we can send those along to the other boards so they can see where we're at with it.
Okay, okay. And to be clear, we were assuming there will be two, we'll be the lead agency here, my word. Right, okay. Does that make sense to you guys, what we're doing here? Dennis, do you want to say anything to this?
No, I'm just listening for the, you know, there's really not much we can do tonight other than the coordination.
Right, right.
They'll send out a letter and hopefully everybody will respond that they'll leave it up to the, you know, to the board for lead agency.
Okay. They have thirty days to respond.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Okay, fair enough. Then. Sure, I saw it for most to, for, for this resolution, to recoup this resolution, coordinating lead agency for a site plan. Of thirty-one Long Island Avenue, rescinding negative declaration dated May 28, 2019.
Okay, so. Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Discussion on this in a little while, or is that over right now?
If you want, if you want to address the board, you can. Come on, come on to the podium.
My name is George Schmone. I live at fourteen Oakland Avenue. I. My family owns this property. I've been, we've been, we had a building there and I have a picture of it over there. It was, we allowed it to be torn down because of the contaminants. My family decided that it was best for the village and its residents to let the building be torn down to get rid of the contaminants before they started hurt of anybody. So this is, and when we did that, we were promised that we would be able to rebuild the building and that they would grant just about any, any barriers that we needed for, for a new, for the new construction. Now, that was fourteen years ago. I. And paid us some money for like three years for the rents and they said we would be able to build it at the end of those three years. Well, spent eleven more. And in that time, I've been paying the taxes and the upkeep and the insurance and everything that's involved in owning a piece of property. And I've been trying to do this. I mean, I just keep getting stonewalked. Is it, is it not this board? It's another board? Or it's something else, another reason? Now it's a traffic study. Well, I told them before, I said, you know, this lot was cut a hundred years ago. There's no way that I can follow the new zoning laws. Because there's nothing left if I do. So anyhow, as I said, I have a picture of the old, of the old building here. If you'd like to see what it looked like. I don't know if any of you were here.
I went to businesses.
So, you know, we have a few businesses there. It was, it was a good. It's a good thing. And my family would like to, like to proceed with this. I mean, this is something, you know. I mean, it's an ugly building. I mean, God's sake, it's ugly. And now they want me to build the exact same thing. I can see they want the footprint or close to the footprint, but you know, as I said, times change, you know?
Thank you for the photos. Nice to see it again. I went to the video store many, many, many times.
But you know, that's, you know, that's what it is. And I don't know, as I said, my wife can't even come here. She gets sick. She goes home and gets sick. I mean, we've been going through this for eleven years now. At most, I figured it out. I've lost about eleven million dollars of rent over the eleven year period. And I, I feel, there's that. I mean, how you doing? Well, I I just feel like I'm under terrible hardship. And I, I need every, every board's help. I really do. I'm here of end to end, and I'll be truthful again. I lived in this village my entire life. I worked in this village my entire life. God knows how many things my wife and I have done in this village. But, you know, I understand, but I would, I would ask for your special consideration for anything that is needed. Look at, I'm not here to hurt the village. I would never hurt Sadak. Because I was born and raised here. I was born and raised, I was raised over Schmoni's, that was my home. The back street where they want to put all this stuff, that was my playground.
Thank you, sir. And thank you for coming in. Anyone else have comments? Well, listen, hold on. Nice to see you. Okay, so we just went through the. The bottom reason of the back property. So that was the first resolution. We just, we just passed. One of the second's really not. Okay, so resolution for nations. Coordinating lead agency comfort realty LLC project located street, Quello Road Street, Seventh Bridge Street, Eleventh Bridge Street, twenty-three Bridge Street. That, as we know, is the large group of properties behind your own building. His old playground, actually. Good to know that way. All right, so if I understand this correctly, what we're, what we're doing here is responding to a letter for the board or question of the board for them to have a lead agency.
Correct. The village board asked for a lead agency in this matter. Since they have to issue the special exception use permit for the affordable workforce housing. And then eventually it will come to you for site plan review. But for secret purposes, they want to be the lead agency. So this would be authorizing them to take lead agency. And consenting to that, basically.
Okay. Any questions about that?
Now, we go to the village trustees.
We'll take on the agency or they're requesting the agency for the, for the product, or just the.
Why? Because they're, they have to approve a special exception permit use to allow for that specific affordable housing use that mixed use development to occur. So that's why they're requesting the agency on that matter.
I will respond to a letter in particular. Was there anything?
I believe there was correspondence, but I don't know.
That's email. Let's turn the way to the email.
Okay.
We will always be.
Well, we are a lead agency or we have everything else for most things to.
Most things, all things.
All to, to Liz Vail's point is the change in code and the village rules, laws, but who? Who has jurisdiction? The, the trust, the trustees now have jurisdiction over.
Over this particular special permit. So the trustees always had jurisdiction over certain special permits like cell towers, right? They always had that, that in the code. And this is another one they took on, which is the affordable housing mixed use development. It's, it requires approval from the village board of trustees for the special exception use itself. And then it comes to you if they, if that proceeds for a site plan approval. You still have all your site plan plow powers over that. And they would, and this doesn't preclude you from weighing in as an involved agency. It just allows them to be the lead agency and then I can still weigh in for secret purposes on this project. This is a very large project. I just paid a pretty thorough secret review. And there'll be ample opportunity for the planning board to weigh in on that secret review as well.
A point was made earlier, I heard from one of the board members is that this is, is going to be a big complicated project. And to a certain extent, it might be helpful to let people who are taking responsibility for handle the super review.
Just clarify for me, so, under the new ordinance over here, is it all affordable housing developments over here will be under the trustees? Special exemption?
In VB and OD.
Okay.
Yeah. Those districts.
This is that proposed housing development that they own.
Yeah.
For the. You're right. Propose, that means.
Correct. Right.
And the group who had installed the unit business.
This, this, this would allow for it to start the super review, I believe, if I understand it correctly.
Correct.
So by, someone needs to begin, which will be elaborate, long, probably detailed review. It can probably take quite a while.
Yes. Yeah, this just, this is just the beginning. It was just submitted to all the boards and this first step is to coordinate lead agency for a type one action. It's a type one action under secret. The first step is to coordinate lead agency, which the village board of trustees did. And this would just be giving the message back to them that it's fine for them to proceed for lead agency purposes.
When, when you say a little bit beyond the point where the way in. I thought of that a little bit, but would, would we be invited to? I mean, when, when would that happen?
So there's mandatory referrals, obviously. For special exception review, uses review, but also for a lengthy secret process, there's public hearings. You can always, you know, there'll be documents on file with the village clerk's office that you can review and provide input on if you'd like to, because their secret terminal determination will ultimately bind your board as well. So you want to make sure you're comfortable with the findings that they're making with respect to the environmental impacts, right? And that's something that, that will be afforded to you. They'll be able to weigh in.
So would we more could decide that, hey, this, this.
Look at this more closely. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay.
After resolution, directing them, adopting, you know, a letter. Yeah, I would encourage you to do that as a board. I wouldn't encourage you to go individually if, you know, unless you're a direct neighbor. Because it will come before you, so, you know. Through the process itself, you'll have an opportunity.
So that, that's something to consider in that is if, if things are, if there's something in particular that you're seeing or any of us are saying during the super review that we want, we want to give our two cents on, then seems like we can have that opportunity to do that in the secret process and then we'll progress in any case. Okay. Do you want to talk about some more? You guys feel comfortable about voting on this?
No, in this case, I'm not comfortable.
Okay, okay. Then I'll accept the motion to.
Nice to.
You're sure you want, come on to the podium. Thank you, board.
John Jeffroy, thirty-three Meadows. A few homes that's not part of this new development and some of the things I want to bring to attention. Could you kind of speak up a little bit?
Okay.
I don't think that, that's a microphone.
Yeah.
I'll speak louder. One of the points that I don't think has ever been brought up is the fact that this is a superfund site. Eleven Bridge Street, which is one of the, the main building that's going to be part of this development is entirely within the superfund site. And as, and Seven Bridge Street is partly within the superfund site. Now, it has been remediated. Now, I don't know if that's still, if that removes the designation of a superfund site, if it still remains. I think that's one thing that the board should find out, if I could find out. I mean, that would save everybody, I mean, a lot of time and trouble if, if this thing, if property cannot be built on a superfund site, because this, this man's going to be looking for New York State guidelines for affordable housing rates. I mean, are they going to provide him with affordable housing rights and affordable housing rates and affordable housing tax benefits? If this is built on a superfund site? And also is this a place where you're going to want families and children and that type of thing? I think that's one thing that really should be looked into, you know, at the beginning.
That's actually identified in Nelson Pope and Borges' original report on this matter. It's online if you'd like to read it. All, all of the, all of the documents related to the application are now online, available online if you want to read through it. And there's an initial report from Nelson Pope for he's identifying that they need to provide, the other side needs to provide more information regarding the previous contamination on site. So that's, that's information that will be fleshed out through the secret process.
Okay, all right. And then, oh, the other thing that I want to mention is the parking. He's proposed, I think in his initial proposal, it was something like forty-two spaces or thirty-eight spaces. It was, wasn't a lot. Based on the Sag Harbor new zoning between the apartments, departments would require an additional hundred and forty-two spaces. And retail would provide, would require another hundred and seventy spaces, a total of three hundred and twelve spaces. And there's presently a hundred and sixty-seven spaces between the two parks. So technically, he would be required to provide more than double the spaces that are already there. So, and I think that this should really be addressed. Nobody's really looked at it.
It hasn't really started yet. That's why, yeah.
It's, it's a very big problem.
It's gonna be, it's, it's gonna be.
I'm just trying to speak.
Of course.
I get it. I see the cars riding around all the time, looking for spaces, waiting for people to move, you know? Or, you know, it's, it's a big issue because it really is. I mean, that's, I think that's one of the main things that has to be addressed. And if, if he can't provide adequate parking, I'm going to say.
Yeah, so thank you for coming in and talking about that. I think, if I understand it correctly, the secret process, which we're now moving on to handle to those four trustees. The secret process will be dealing with all those kinds of.
Just call my one.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. But, but I think, I'm glad you came to us, to bring your attention. It will be really important to put on the record during the secret process. And that, that I believe is.
Absolutely. He'll be able to comment on the analysis provided and to check whether it's sufficient and he'll be providing a lot of comments.
Yeah.
And you'll have opportunities to speak on it.
Yeah, so I've been encouraging you to keep an eye on that when that happens and that will be right away, but.
Not yet.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, how do you people feel about the lack of parking?
We know it's a big parking issue and we're not going to talk about that particularly. But we, it's also one of these, oh, we want to be a little guy. Okay, sure. All right. Yeah, thank you for coming in.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
We're, you weren't allowed, is it?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you vote? I don't know. Did they vote?
We did vote, okay.
No, no, it's, we have that motion, but no, we didn't vote that.
Okay. So all those in favor?
I need one, I need the motion and second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah. Thank you for.
You're in, yeah, you're in number one.
So, and, and we.
So you went, you did, you did hear from the applicant on thirty-one Long Island Avenue, but I just wanted to see if anybody had any questions on the report. And also, you know, generally we send this, that, and that around to different departments and agencies. And it might make sense to do that at this point, send it to the fire marshal. CPW. So I just wanted to weigh in, get your input on that.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Thirty-one Long Island Avenue, that?
Yeah, yeah.
Can you repeat that again, please?
So the question, so there were, we had comments on the traffic and parking studies, which that are in the report that are questions from the engineer. One of the, the things that the traffic study says is that the curb cut will only be used for exiting the parking lot for the proposed use and therefore they will have to provide the site distance analysis, you know, for making a safe left turn or a right turn even. Because there was the assumption that the exiting vehicles would go through the property to the south, which is where the gas hole was previously.
Can I interrupt you, please? That's not gonna happen. It has to be an entrance and exit onto Long Island Avenue. I do not have access to the back property. Please.
So the traffic engineer.
The only thing I can say about what they're telling me is the parking lot is pre-existing. It has had that parking spaces and that's all I'm asking for.
Mr. Shaka, this is Dennis Downs. I got Kathy Isman's report a couple of days ago. And I've circulated among the Scaboni team of consultants. And we're going to be amending that report. There will be no parking, will be no exiting, going out onto the national grid property. Everything will be coming out in and out of the Long Island Avenue property. But that's going to, that's going to be amended to correct the record. So it, it's really, it's premature right now to try to talk about it because it's going to get amended anyway.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. That's, that's great. So in that case, it would be premature also to, to circulate this plan to the fire marshal, et cetera. Because that would likely be a comment of fire marshal that the proposed curb cut is too narrow.
Right.
And, you know, having new parking spaces there would block views and so forth. So, okay, so we'll wait on that.
Okay.
That's great. Okay.
Dennis, are you planning to get that into the for next month or do you have a timeframe in mind?
I think we can have everything in by next month, yes.
Great, good. Let me move on.
I'll get it to you in advance so you'll have time to review it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Tony?
Yes, I tried to buy the his property. And I put in a bid. I wasn't even in the same game. These people got so much money through dick tricks.
I'm sorry to hear it, but.
You know. I gave them a, a good offer. I mean, it isn't, it wasn't, it was over a million dollars. But, you know, naturally they had to take the highest bidder.
Right, right.
I tried, I tried to buy, when, when they first started the, the remediation of the property. We tried to get the village and us to buy the property. Actually, we fell on that for years.
Yep, right, right.
Well, we can't really about announce it.
Right, right.
So we'll, we'll roll it in there.
All right, thank you for that. Okay, so, so Kathy, if I said this correctly, then so, so we're done with thirty-one. Long Island Avenue for a moment. Dennis will do his work and come back to us. Hopefully Dennis will have the time to, Kathy has time to look at it and respond back and give us comments. So that Mr. Tony will have things moving forward right away. So thanks for doing this, ladies. Okay, thank you very much. Number two, fifth one Division Street. We have had correspondence from Tiffany Spalata, our councilwoman, who would like to postpone that until the November meeting, I believe.
Oh, that's October. October.
October's the next one. I think she said she was going to be away and she said we'll probably put, whatever. But we're just able to talk over.
As for German from tonight's planning board meetings. November meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So I think I need a, a vote to table till November. Is that right?
So.
Okay, section. Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful, thank you, everybody.
So for the record, the next that needing is scheduled for the twelfth second.
Of November?
Yes.
Thank you. Twenty-two, right?
Sorry, twenty-four.
Okay.
So October maybe.
October twenty-fifth.
Okay, so number three. Steven Lawford, one hundred and fifty-two, Hennessy Street, discussion of proposed rental building position. Site plan in front of me, set plan in front of me. Kathy, you want?
Yeah, sure. So we had the, the last report on this was basically referring this action to zoning board to make the determination on specifically the, the increase in the size of the building as well as the retail, the request for retail use. And the zoning board has rendered determination and sending it back to the planning board at this point. They, they voted in favor of the expansion of the, of the use. So it's back to this board.
And deny the retail use of the property, though.
So at this point, that was, that was where the majority of the, you know, the holdup was for moving this forward for a decision.
The application, you know, one of the other points had been that there was a drive to the north side of the building that would have required. People to back up on 714, so that's actually been taken out, and that's, that's a good thing. There, unfortunately, that's where the loading space would have been, so that's another, that's something that the planning board will have to consider in their review. But at this point, you know, at this point, I would like to get the input from the other agencies. It's complete to that point where we can get input, and the, and the site plan procedure. Has the list of those agencies that we would send it to, so it would go to the fire marshal, the car, and the ambulance for the ARB. The harbor mandatory work for harbor, harbor committee, and, and also the sub-county planning commission.
Okay. So, so we have a use restriction. Is that what's, that's how you're understanding?
Yeah, it would have to, it would have to be the same use that was approved when the pre-existing non-conforming use was approved in the past for office use.
So office, no retail.
Right, it's approved for offices.
In storage?
Uh, there was office and storage at the beginning, but then there was a ZVA decision that allowed for the conversion of the storage to office, so it was, I think, I believe now it's office and office. Yeah, yeah. It can continue the. It's the continuation of warehouse and office, right?
So if I understand correctly, if what we're, what you're asking for us to do now is to vote to send that up for commentary from the different required agencies first?
Yes, yes, and so, I mean, I, I just got this today, so I can take a look at the prior planning comments and see if there's anything that we want to discuss further as far as requirements. Or those could be considered as part of the decision in future. There may be things that were missing, you know, related to drainage and that kind of thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would have to be reviewed by the building inspector prior to his use of any building permit anyway, so that kind of thing could be, you know, moved forward. Assuming that this goes forward.
Right.
But I, again, I have to look at it, make sure that, that there isn't anything, you know, different about this plan, other than.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, that by, by moving this forward, it sort of allows for the applicant to move forward in the right way, but just to do your review properly. Down the line, when it comes back to us. Fair enough.
And those agencies will probably have recommendations as well for you to consider as part of it.
Okay, and at that point, we'll, we'll have it in a month or two, I assume.
Yeah, I think we'd want to, we want to give them at least 30 days, which means that we're not going to have quite 30 days between now and the next meeting, and it's going to take a couple of days to pull together the plans to send them around, so.
Right.
So it's probably not until the following one, but we might start trickling in, getting some comments in.
Right.
Which can be addressed, and we can forward them as we get them. TNC is another one, yeah, so I'm sure that they weighed in on it as well.
It's only six years.
Okay, so did you want to have?
These referrals are mandatory under the code.
I understand, it's that 30-day window from the time of this meeting to the next one.
Right.
This is really into two months instead of just a month.
Right.
Okay. I waited this long.
Did you want to speak to the board, any question, or?
No, I think, I think it's all been fairly well explained already. By the way, I'm Stephen Loffler, I'm owning the bill.
Yeah, I, I think we, it seems like we're, we're game, we're all bottom, whether we want to report on this, so we're. To go to the next step for you. Does anybody have any more comments or questions? No?
The only comment I have last time this was here, there was some, we had some letters, some other correspondence from the still. But I think that was mostly in opposition of retail space. Solves everybody's issue.
We like that. Well, if that's the case, so if more questions are coming, so. Or the other involved agencies for the review. That's the last item on the agenda, however. There's one thing I want to report, and I spoke to you two folks earlier. You'll see on the front of this. Which is. Review the local sector of planning credit, because this was done earlier this year. It was requested by. It's pretty much 15, 20 pages long, it's, it's essentially looking at the very planning documents that are known. Historically, for the, for, for the forward. Specifically looking at 2008, or more importantly, looking at 2008 review. So it's done by industry science. Or, and giving it, sort of looking at that, seeing where that stand, if that's dated, and how we might want to update that. So essentially, what, what the mayor's considering is the conference, you have updated the conference plan, and using this as a, as a springboard. This and the, and also the LWRP, which is something else we, that we have in the village, which is sort of like, acts a bit like a, like a comprehensive plan. Been around forever, it's being updated right now, as we speak, by Nelson Pope, for these. But the, what my intention is, and the mayor's intention is, is for, you know, hopefully, for, and Liz, in order to meet today. Hopefully, the, the planning board will become the nexus for comprehensive plans for the village going forward. And we'll come back to you next month with some more documents, and more of our things to look at, and more, more, more commentary. But just to, to what can your whistle say, to get you guys to prime a little bit, I wanted to hand you these, this, so you can take over that. At the same time. Just NYI. Something the village is undergoing a comprehensive plan review right now, they have a draft form, and this is it. They haven't, I don't think they've, they've voted in yet, but this is an example of what we could do, potentially, if we wanted to, or maybe not. As, as big and broad as there is. But I don't think we have this for everyone, do we? But we can get, we can give, send them the digital version, or show them where to find it. That'd be great, that'd be great. Just to give you an idea of what it might look like, or could look like if we decide to go with that. But that, I just want to get you guys thinking about that, because it could be a nice, interesting project going forward. Okay. Is there anything else that I haven't, that I failed to address? If not, then I guess I have to entertain a vote.
Unfortunately, Kay's not here tonight, and, oh, we, you know, just say this to all of us, and I. I want to thank her formally, and I will, when she is at a meeting, also, for her several years of leadership on the planning board. After you left and ran away to London. And she did a great job, she worked really hard, and was very responsible under difficult circumstances, I might say, during the pandemic. And so we want to thank her for that, we want to welcome you back, John.
Thank you, Larry.
And look forward to your leadership and your advice and coordination of our board.
Thank you, and thank her for mentioning Kay, she was not here tonight, but I did work with her before.
Yeah, she's still a member of the board.
She certainly does, she couldn't be here tonight.
No, I'm just curious.
Yeah, yeah, she will be back.
And also say, before we close, that it's great to see everyone in person, finally. Mr. Loffler, too, welcome to the first edition of the planning board. So we're Saturday night.
Thank you, Larry. All right. Anyone care to make a motion to adjourn? Very good.
Second.
Very good, all of you. Thank you, everybody.
Sounds very nice, Larry.